Stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome, the ones on line. I'm just to call everybody's attention, Nate from the paper isn't here, but Barb Porter is sitting in. Welcome her. What's that, thing to add or to the agenda? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second the motion for the agenda.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes of March 5th meeting. Corrections, additions?
I had a couple. On page one of four, under where it says commissioners open forum, that where it says none, that's got to be tabbed back over that way. Oh, I saw it.
That's minor.
I know, I know. And then I had one more. I don't know if this is correct, maybe America, it's just a number, page two, number three, where it says motion to approve the off sale intoxicating liquor license. Is that one? Is it an off sale intoxicating or is it just an off sale liquor license?
Oh, it's off sale liquor, but they call it intoxicating.
They do call it intoxicating, okay. Okay. That's it. That's all I had.
Barry?
Nope, I didn't have anything.
You didn't see that none?
I didn't see that none.
I did catch that bullet point was off.
No, correction, minutes for the 5th, I have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, Barry, could I have a second?
Well, second.
Would they, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, thanks.
Sorry, Peggy.
Consent agenda, anything somebody wants to pull? The questions on? We had our finance last Friday and we didn't really have any big issues with it, so with that, I'll call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion, Dave, a second?
Second.
So, Barry, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on, open forum. Todd? Just come on up, is the mic on there? State your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Todd Summerson, East Shore Drive, Detroit Lakes.
Is that him? Okay, you got it. He's probably wondering what I'm even here for, huh? No, I didn't come to complain. Just wanted to tell you guys that it's really nice to see your board work together like you did throughout this last issue that we had with the land up north. I think it's great that all you guys worked together. It was awesome. Special thanks that goes out to all of you that testified in St. Paul. I went down there myself. I know how hard it is to testify down there. I actually kind of fell apart when I did mine. Richard, you did a great job. Erica, Barry, gonna pick on you? You did like an outstanding job. Like, through the roof, big time. So, wanted to, just wanted to tell you that.
Thanks.
So, another one that I just wanted to recognize was Sheriff Klander. He really put his heart into this. Thank you, Sheriff Klander. Last but not least, I want to say thank you to some of my friends that helped out. Craig Hall, Josh DuMell, John Trandom, Greg Scherzer, and Dave Vipon. Dave's the guy that kind of flew us around. So, thanks to all of you. Now, I guess what I want to do is put us in the right gears to move forward so that we don't let this ever happen again. Just want to tell you how important that is. So, thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Todd.
Mr. Schramm, oh, new haircut and everything.
I too want to thank you guys for passing that resolution and getting right on it. I was at a meeting and there were some Clearwater County Commissioners. They were, they were very impressed that you guys had gotten on the stick so fast. I've been going up to the lands, land of rocks, trees, and quiet for over 70 years. And John, I know you've been there first, at least around there for at least 60 years. But, but listen, we're going to be under constant attack with this. And I, I caution you about growing that, our land department because it, we could, we could conceivably lose. We might not have five strong stalwarts up guarding this property. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
All those on the list, anybody else have a comment? Do we have a schedule? Hearing none, reports and correspondence.
I can go first.
Okay.
I had our human services meeting. We, our human services received funding from the opioid settlement to do, to have a naloxone access point at human services. So, they're doing some training. They're going to be doing community training on May 9th from 6:00 to 7:00 at the DL Library. And then any county staff that wants to be a part of it will have training on May 16th. Also, just some updates, they're continuing to working, working through some of the safety issues. They're getting quotes and making some good progress with that.
Is there, can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
In your discussion, has there been any, does this, does this normalize it more? I mean, does it, have there been any studies to say, is it, is it being?
Oh, the naloxone?
Yeah.
I, I don't.
You know, because I just worry that it's becoming so acceptable and so normalized that, that it's, it's not, it's not right. I mean, it, I read in there, it says it, it makes it so there's no stigmatism with them. It's like, well, if you're overdosing, there is a stigmatism with it, in my opinion. You are having a problem. There is an issue. And to normalize it, I think, is almost to a point where we're, I just, I just don't think that's right. I don't think it should be normal to have ODs all the time. I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a good, a good way to look at it. I think we have it as a rescue attempt to save people, but to normalize it and to, is, is not right, in my opinion. It's like, it is wrong and we need those, people need help, but to make it so it's not, I, I just, I just question whether...
Yeah, we haven't had any of those conversations.
It's just difficult.
Yeah.
What they say, there's enough fentanyl in the U, in the US to kill everybody in the country more than once. So, and it's, people should know, it comes from China and through the southern border, that's how we're getting most of it here. People should know that. And you're right, Barry, that it shouldn't be normal, but on the other hand, people should have these kits and know how to use them. It's kind of sad, but I would hate to, I hate to see deaths over it, but...
I mean, addiction is a struggle.
Yeah, it is a struggle, but it is, it's only going to get, probably only going to get worse. And so, yeah, I don't know where we go from here, but...
Yeah. Then I also had senior council. They are hoping to, they have the sale program, which is called Stay Active and Independent for Life. One of Bonnie Moses is working on getting trained for that so she can be a trainer. So, they're hoping that they can open or expand the program into Lake Park. And then they do have it currently every Tuesday and Thursday at Trinity Lutheran Church from 1:00 to 2:00. They had 2,586 Meals on Wheels in February, which is just down slightly from January. We had our housing subcommittee. We really discussed in detail the Housing Trust, Housing Trust Fund and the advantages that we would have if we would look at one. And we, we reviewed an ordinance from Ottertail County. So, we are going to be moving forward with presenting that to the EDA to see their thoughts and likely bringing it forward to the board. Then I just also had the Northwest Emergency Joint Board. And that, the discussion there, there was a lot of discussion about, if they have a, and John, you probably know more about it than what I do, the remote council. There's apparently been some discussion of doing a co-op for the region. So, there was a lot of discuss, discussion about that for dispatch. And they just approved to use a $40,000 grant as a match funding to, as a hosted proxy so that they can move forward with that and hopefully get one of them for the region.
I just wanted to comment on that sale program. So, I'm, I'm on the Dancing Sky Committee. And the Dancing Sky supports and funds with, with grants the sale program, so. And they're pretty, they're pretty excited about the fact that it might expand, it could expand into Lake Park.
And it's a lot of just, it's exercising for seniors to build their balance and not necessarily muscle, but more balance. It's, it's seated exercise, standing up exercise, whatever it is that you're comfortable doing. And then just my last one, we did have a comp plan update last week. And we will be getting some input from townships at the Becker County Spring Township Meeting. And I think that's all I have.
Thanks. Thank Erica for sitting in, Communication Board, out of town. And I haven't had any issues down there with email and...
Yeah, no problem.
I, I can go next. So, I'd, I'll go back to Dancing Sky. So, in their unit review, Dancing Sky is the area agency on aging. And most of their services apply to people that are 60-plus years old. Some of them specifically apply to like 65 and older. But, like, the sale program is one of those that applies to 65 and older. But, they, that's one of the big things that, that they did here in Becker County was, they highlighted, and another thing that, this is last year, another, another highlight was at the Becker County Fair, they had a booth and they had some information for seniors. And they also had what called the justice bus, which is a legal, any, any senior that needs legal assistance can get legal assistance. They have this bus is set up. It's got technology in it that's crazy inside this little, this van. But they can get any services they, they need or want. Also, others, we had a Dancing Sky meeting actually yesterday. Another thing in Becker County is Nutrition Services Incorporated, or is the, is the, one of the companies that serves meals to seniors in Becker County. And last year in Becker County, they served 40,804 meals. That's a lot. That's, that's pretty cool. Most of those are meals on wheels. And now they also started a new thing this last year where they give frozen meals to them. Okay? I think, I think it was pretty new last year. So, so lots of people, more people are taking advantage of the, of the meals on wheels so they can get like a whole week's supply. And then they can take them home, freeze them. And I, and they did do a survey in the counties they service. They service nine counties in the Dancing Sky region. And the survey was 98% positive. So, that's, it's, whatever they're doing is, is helping and working. And so, if you look at 40,804 meals in Becker County, that's an average of 177 a day. So, that's pretty cool. And they do have in-person congregant, congregant meals, which aren't real big. But they, they average about 20 of those a day. And there's a place in Detroit Lakes, Osage. Boy, I forgot the other one. Anyway, there's three places in Becker County that people will, can go congregate to have a, have an actual meal. Now, places like, like, places like Hitterdall, for example, which is not in Becker County, they have, they have like 15 or so that come every day to eat there, but that's their community. They all live in the town of Hitterdall. There's a, there's a, there's an assisted, there's a, I don't know if it's an assisted living, but it's an apartment complex for, for which, for elderly people. And they all eat together and they go to the community center, which is literally down the street, about a half a block, and they eat there. So, and the only reason I know that is because my grandparents used to live in Hitterdall. Anyway. So, that's just some of the things that they've done. A couple of other things at the Dancing Sky is the, so the Senior Linkage Line, which is a, which is a phone call service that seniors can call into and get, and get help. So, one, so one of the busiest times of the year for, for their linkage line is when they do open enrollment for Medicare insurance. And that goes from October, I think, 25th to December 7th. So, in the state of Minnesota, they got, I believe it was almost 41,000 calls. And what they've done this past year for all of the area aging, so, all the area aging agencies, is they decided to have all the phone calls go to, to any agency. They tried to separate them by area code. But sometimes people will come, call from North Dakota for their parents that live in this area or something. So, they just decided that they're going to, all going to help everybody. So, they do that. And they actually do, it actually does help a lot. Unfortunately, there's a lot of people that don't know about this, some of these things. So, anybody that can tell, tell people and help them out. But anyway, Becker County gets about 10% of the calls in the, in the 21 county area, which is quite, quite a bit. So, it's a pretty good thing. And, and there's one need that we found out in, in Becker County is that there isn't really, so like, when somebody calls the, somebody calls the Senior Linkage Line and asks about Medicare, they will ask them a whole bunch of questions. And then they'll put them into the system and they'll say, well, here's your, here are your options. Okay? But they won't, they can't tell them what to do. They can't, they're not allowed to persuade them or tell them to pick this or that. So, there is, what, there's a need and, and there are some services, but there's a need in especially Becker County and the whole Dancing Sky area for private companies or, or something of that nature to, to take these people, show them exactly what they should do. Because Medicare changes so, I mean, you could, you could have, you could have medication paid for in this year and then next year you won't have that same medication paid for on the same plan. You have to get a different type of plan. So, they don't know those things. And they, and they could save a lot of money if they could get more assistance, guidance. Okay? All right, I'll stop, I'll stop on the, that one. So, I had a Recreation Advisory Committee meeting also. We discussed the 3480. I, I did hear on the radio this morning that the, the tribal council has, came up with a plan to, for, for the, if they get control of the Whitehead Forest to keep it public. So, thank goodness, we have a lobbyist down there that can keep us informed and make sure that we are still informed. So, that's, we need to keep, we need to keep on top of that. But anyway, at the RAC Committee, we talked about den logs, the shelter should be done by this, end of this fall. That's the, that's the goal. Apex Engineering has gotten surveys from Meadowland, what's Meadowlands last, Meadowland?
Surveying?
Yeah. And they, there's two options. One option is for, for a parking lot with the watershed building to stay there. And the other option will be with the watershed building not to stay there. The watershed built, the building contains a trailer with a boat and two trucks. So, they really want just a place to store their stuff if, if that building is going to not be there. So, we tried to look at some ideas and if anybody else has any ideas where they could, they could actually store their stuff. Or, right now, they currently also pay rent at the Midwest, or the, not Midwest, but Wells Fargo Bank, that building they, they use, that's where their offices are for the watershed. So, they could possibly rent a facility that houses all of their stuff, too. So, that's an option. I don't know if there's any, any, really any, anything around that they could use, but that, so if we could help them find a place to go, they would just vacate the building because the building is not, it's, it's kind of old and not necessarily...
What is, what is the county's obligation to them? I mean, what is this?
I don't know.
On our property and it's, what's, what is our obligation for future? I don't know if we have one. If we don't have one, if we need to move out for parking, it should be their responsibility, not our responsibility to find them.
I'm not sure if they have any written agreement with the colony when the colony allowed them to build on private. But, our watershed, Wednesday morning, so probably some discussion.
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
I mean, I, I think we, that building's pretty bad shape. And I, I think it's on property that we own, I believe. So, if we need it for parking to enhance the public's opportunities, I think it's, they better, we could, we could give them a time, timeline to say when we'd like it out of there, if that's the route we'd choose to go.
A lot of the vehicles are suggesting they could be parked on County Highway Lot, either a present new one or our 59 pit has storage. There's things that can be worked out on it.
But again, I don't know what, what is the county's responsibility to provide them with, with housing of their vehicles and trailers? That's, I don't know that we have one. I don't know that we should be providing...
I'll probably find that, ask that question.
That's, that's what I'm asking. If we have an obligation, then we have an obligation. But if we don't, that's there, then it's there on their plate, not ours.
That makes sense. Then we talked about Wantigan Park. So, they want to hook up to Frazee Sewer Water in the north end of town. And Frazee's okay with this, but Frazee wants to retrofit or reline their old sewer lines in, in the city of Frazee first. So, but what, what relining is, is they'll, they'll, they'll send the camera down the pipe. And then if they see a bad spot, they'll dig it up, cut it out, fix it, then send the camera back through to, they aren't going to replace the line. They're just going to find the spots that need to be replaced. And then they, and I guess it, I guess it's a pretty common and works process. So, they, so they also are trying to raise private donations of $400,000 to invent for this next coming, this coming year. And they're going to try and get up to 1.2 million at some point so they can get matching funds from, I believe it's from the state. So, that's where Wantigan Park is at. Heartland Trail, there's nothing new. They're still waiting on that wetland area. Toa Bowden. So, Toa Bowden, the land trust has made an offer. And that's about it. Haven't heard anything since, about that yet. So... Chilton Park. So, Chilton Park, we had talked as a RAC Committee about, about making primitive campsites in Chilton Park. Well, there were a couple of people from, that live, live by Bass Lake, live, are Bass Lake residents, which is in Chilton Park. They're concerned about noise and where the campsites are going to be and who's going to manage them and so forth. And, and none of the campsites are actually going to be right on the lake. So, they were kind of concerned that to be right on the lake can be real noisy. And so, they're not going to be that. And they're going to be primitive campsites. So, they're not going to have, you know, electric hookups and, and, and water and so forth. And they're going to have to transport or probably hike in to, to get to some of them. So, it's not like they're going to just go out and cause trouble at a primitive campsite because there's no, there's really no amenities. But anyway, the, the RAC Committee decided that we would like to go out to Chilton Park before we move forward with, with these primitive campsites so that we can all look at it. So, the plan is to do that possibly in the morning before our next meeting, which would be in the afternoon, which would be next month. That's, that's some, an option that they're, that Mitch and Steve Schub are going to explore. And then there also were, there was also something brought up about who, who's going to manage these sites. So, Phil Hanson had the idea that maybe one of the local resorts could, we could partner with them and they could, you know, we could share something and they could manage the sites for us. That's a possibility. I just have one more and then I'll stop talking. We had a courthouse meeting and most of the stuff's on the agenda. The one thing that's not is we talked about the veteran services. And I believe, Carrie, the state's going to try to come down once or twice a week, possibly. Once a week to help, to help with services. So, yeah, so hopefully we can get that going so it's adequate. And then the last thing is I certif, I helped certify the election presidential nomination primary, the PNP canvas. And to correct me if I'm wrong, Barry, about 16% of the registered voters voted and that's up from usually about 14%. All right.
I think it's noteworthy though to note that, I mean, we had the, Dave had to stay back. Dave couldn't go testify because he was, we had to do this canvassing at that time. So, thank you for doing that. And, and we got, we got the praise today. And, and it was greatly appreciated. But thank you for staying back and, and making sure. And Erica is another one. We had to have two, we were supposed to have two. And I was one of them. And I went to testify and Erica was here for that in case something happened. We, we had to have that primary certified. So, sometimes you can't be in two places at one time. So, the only thing I had was the testimony. And then, because I was, I was gone last week. I have a bunch of meetings coming up this week. But I did want to, and Jim Olson, I see is online. I, I got a call from Lake Unis Township and, and they were, wanted some kalsium chloride on a township. And they called me and I, and they were calling Jim's office. But my question or comment is, make sure we have, because I, the way I heard it is the township is going to pay for that, but we can't have residents just calling in and, and asking for kalsium chloride to put on and then build the township. I mean, we have, I mean, that's the way it sounded. I'm like, just make sure we have, township is committed to paying that prior to, to getting that.
That Jonah works with the township, the township that's providing that service, then they lift the roads and...
Right. But she, one of the township supervisors told her to call them and work. I'm like, whoa, we, we got to work with the township. We can't work with the individuals. Otherwise, we will get stiffed by a...
No, they do work with a lot of individuals, but it's money upfront, too.
Right, right.
I didn't, I'll go, I didn't have much, had highway. And most of that's on the agenda. They had negotiations and so forth, but I guess being gone for a week, you miss a few. But I know, a lot of meetings tomorrow starting by 8:00 and going all into the afternoon. So, Richard?
I had human services with Erica. She covered that. And then highway with you. And I guess the only thing I can say about highway is we're looking for a seasonal employee. So, if you people ain't got nothing to do out there, guy with the haircut, you might work out. But that's about all I got.
I see Amanda put out a list of job vacancies yesterday. So, I'm kind of...
Yes, a lot of the seasonals are, positions are posted currently, yes.
Okay, anything else? Reports, correspondence, appointments?
I don't have any.
Moving on to item number four, we want to recognize our past retired law librarian, Bill Wilson.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Had the pleasure of getting...
Had the pleasure of getting Mr. Wilson here this morning, and just wanted to get him on the agenda and thank him for his, what, 12 years?
Yeah, something like that.
14?
Yeah, I lost count.
For his many years of service, running the law library downstairs as our county law librarian. So, I thought I had given Peggy, so.
Along, along with that, I've been on the law library committee the last couple of years since Mr. Canusen retired, and pleasure of working with Bill, and first met Bill out in the gravel pits, he was going to college, and he was working there, and I was doing a little summer work out there, so, known each other for a long time, but thought we'd got a plaque to present you for your years of dedicated work at the law library.
How many black tie ever's on my feet?
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Moving on to county administration, we wanna take, like, Becky and.
Sure.
City.
Sure.
Kind of order there, once they're here.
You ready to go? Yep. Good morning.
Morning, Becky. Morning, Becky.
Well, I think you guys know I'm here for ASK, but I wanna do a little recap of our year first, 'cause we've officially been open a year now, so I think there's, even though we weren't open officially the first two months of last year, I think there's some pretty impressive numbers from the museum. So, if I looked back between 2017 and 2021, of course, we had a few years in there of shutdowns and what have you, but our average attendance at the museum was around 1,500 to 2,500 people. This last year, if we take DaVinci aside, we tracked that completely separately, our paid admissions for last year were around $4,000, our, or, excuse me, 4,000 people. Our member admissions, so those are people who've paid for a membership and are getting in free, were around 7,000 admissions, which is great. It's showing that we're getting memberships, people are taking advantage of getting into the museum, you know, for, on average, for free. Again, DaVinci threw a little curve in that, but they did get a reduction on that. Our summer camps, we served around five, little over 500 kids last year, and we did have several free and reduced fee events this last year that totaled between 1,500 and 2,500 in people. Those are a little harder to, to count. So, what we're finding is our building is being utilized, we still could really increase at least by one more staff, but we're struggling, we're trying to figure out how to grow into that new facility. A few things since that building went up, and, and the pro forma was kinda projected is we had COVID, and everything went up. Significantly, significantly what is affecting us right now is our utilities to maintain the size of that facility, utilities went up, but also just the, the size of the facility. Remember, we're trying to maintain that at a museum-quality environment, so that is a stable environment, which is really hard when you live in, not quite as hard this winter, but when you live in an area like this, it's a little bit harder. Humidity, we're having, we're seeing the opposites, we were really wet in the old building, we're a little too dry in this building, so trying to work all that out. And then our insurance really skyrocketed. So, last fall, when we were preparing our ASK, we did work through with the county administrator, trying to maybe separate out our liability and our responsibilities from an artifact perspective versus the building replacement costs. We tried to go under the county, you know, go under the county umbrella and pay that portion, the, the entity wouldn't allow it, and so, long story short, our insurance went from about $8,000 a year in our old facility to almost $25,000 a year. And of that, our building portion of that to replace the building is about $10,000. So, I'm here asking if you would consider helping us with that portion. With the, what, the dollar amount we were looking at last fall was 8,300, so if you're seeing that in your notes, that's where that came from. When it was all said and done, the policy came on its 10,412.
So, when we got our budget stuff last year, we had that listed as not in the budget, but it was, because it was still being explored by MCIT, and now that was denied by MCIT, so now, that's why Becky's here.
I should note, we did increase things like liability, just because the level of play that happens up in that science floor, sometimes, there was some concern of if there's a lot of people up there, and a lot of kids are, are playing, you're gonna, you know, there's some higher risk. So, we did elevate that a little bit.
Is there anything that you're doing to, like, raise price of membership, raise price of admission, so that we can?
Yeah, yeah, we did raise two categories a little bit. The family went from $85 a year to $100 a year, and the grandparents, which is just similar to a family membership, we, last summer, we had a lot of grandparents bringing in kids that don't live around here, and so that also went from 85 to 100, and those are by far our most utilized. We can also break that down into a monthly payment for them, if they so choose, but from an admission standpoint, $10 for adults and $5 for kids is still pretty aligned with other, you know, history and science museums, and so I didn't want to be too aggressive with that, because I don't want it to be, well, they're, they're, they're too high, we can't, you know, it's not for us. We are really seeing a lot of individuals use our facility, that they're, they're finding a spot, let's just put it that way, that maybe don't have other entities to go to due to cost.
Well, go ahead.
Any other questions, or?
How many, how many memberships, or how much will that, $15 more in a, or a year?
I didn't get a chance to run those numbers, but I can, I can do it after the fact. I should also mention, we've identified the two areas where we can, of course, we can continue to grow memberships, and that was, that's awesome and great, I would love it if every family in the county had a membership. But events are probably one of our highest underutilized, our spaces within the building that people can lease. We haven't really been able to push that very hard, again, due to that staffing capacity.
Yep.
So, that's an area internally that I've identified to my board of, we need to, we need to maybe try to figure out how to get another person in here to enable us to book more events. We're not turning anybody away, but we're not advertising necessarily either. And then our gift shop as well has some serious room to grow.
What is your, what is your, what is your budgeted revenue from door, from walk-in or from all, from all sales of, you know, walk-ins and annual memberships?
Well, our budget last year ended around, and we did end up in the black due to DaVinci, and we ended right around that 200,000 mark.
Not including DaVinci, what would, what would, what would, what is your projected in 24 for your, for your revenue for walk, for foot traffic?
I don't have that budget with me, I'm sorry, Barry. Do you have it with you, David?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna look and see, I have it on my email.
And then as far as a, as far as a, what's your, what's your revenue that you get on a, on your store? What's your sales revenue profit from that store? Does it pay to have someone to pay to sit there?
Well, they also pay, they're at the front desk, so they're also doing admissions, answering questions. The long, the goal was to get to a point where we could maybe share that staff person with the community center. There has been some changes over there, and they've kind of wanted to keep it separate. Now, we're a year in, you know, I meet with them every week, and it's on my list to talk to them again. I think that whole first year, we were trying to, to figure out how to play in the same sandbox, but we've been in, we've been in that position a year now. So, to answer your original question, the revenue from the gift shop was about 30,000, but we could easily, we should be doing more like 60 to 70,000 in that gift shop.
I'm just thinking about this, the, the profit you make for walk-in traffic, I mean, I, I know it's pretty significant, but I'm just throwing, throwing ideas out in my head how, how to increase it, and, and what, what is our goal as a county? Do we want more foot traffic in there? That's not, I mean, I, I don't know the numbers, but what if it was free? Would that increase foot traffic, and the county just supplemented, you know, budget for it, or? That's what I was curious, is what the, I mean, you'd still get donations from most of those people, would still donate to make improvements, but.
There are some counties, Stearns County, I don't know the numbers, but I do know their support raised significantly this last year to make it free to all county residents. I don't, but again, I don't know what that means, I don't know what that number means. I, I do know across the state, county supports of their county museums vary greatly, some of those museums are open three Saturdays a month, you know, they're volunteer, and they're open just a few Saturdays, all the way up to fully staffed, like we are, open, the sizes really vary, but I think the, the, the one that receives the most is in Duluth, and they are around 300,000 or 400,000 annually, but then it goes all the way down to, you know, 30,000 annually and across the state. So, David just pulled this up, our unrestricted support last year, which would mean admissions, donations, memberships, all lumped together, was 210,000, 265.
Yeah, you'd still get donations, you'd still have store sales, you'd still, I mean, so it's, but I think, I think we need to identify what our mission is for that, and I think, obviously, as a county, we wanna protect that asset and provide proper heating and cooling, obviously, but I think it deserves a, a good look at from, from the board, and seeing what, I mean, from the, from the museum board, and.
I do think it's a great asset for our community, I've heard nothing, especially from people with small children, nothing but good things, and on Facebook, you see, you know, many people in there with their children and grandchildren.
Yeah.
Enjoying it, so I do think that it is something we need to promote.
I'd just like to see if it, you know, if you're looking at hiring a new per, another person, that, you know, I start going, that's, that's, that's a big, that's a big ask. If you can provide free access to everyone in the county and, and not hire a new person, it would almost be, you know, you're, you're talking about, what's the difference then? Is it, you know, 50,000 more, you know, and we, everyone's free, or, you know, those are the questions.
Yeah, I think it depends on what that, you know, what does programming look like then? What do summer camps look like? What do, um.
And maybe we.
Events rental, you know, event rentals, things like that.
Maybe we look at, we, we provide the, I mean, I don't know, we, we provide the building and the costs and everything, and the rest's up to you, if you want.
And some counties do that, they pay for kind of everything associated with the building, the utilities, the insurance, the, kinda keep the doors open mentality, but anything beyond that, programming, getting people in the doors, all of that sort of thing, then staffing, then falls back to the entity.
So, what is your ASK today? What do you ask?
Today, the ASK was just to consider covering the insurance, which is, ended up being that 10,412. Originally, the amount we talked about was 8,305.
Were we thinking about, if MCIT got that, were we going to cover it then? Yeah, MCIT would've covered it then.
Right, but are we?
Yeah, yeah.
We would pay the MCIT.
Yeah, yeah, but they won't cover it, so.
Right, I'm just saying, we were.
Just for my clarification, who actually owns the building, being, it's in the county's name, isn't it? Becker County? Because of the.
In the eyes of the state, due to bonding dollars.
Because bonding is, so.
We have such a great relationship with Kelsey that we'll be.
Kelsey's shaking over there, don't. No, we have a great relationship with the city, too, which is, we very much, I mean, we, I feel like those relationships have really grown in the last few years, and we're very proud of that.
So, you would've paid 83?
Yeah, this is the amount that, and it increases 10,412.
MCIT would not take it under the umbrella due to the way that the agreement was written and outlined with the bonding, when everything went back and forth, because we own the land that that building sits on, but in order to get the bonding dollars, we had to lease the land to the county to quote, "build the building," and then now we have to, you lease it back to us, it's, you know, handshake, but it's the way it was written.
All right.
So, basically, it would be about 1,700 roughly more than we would've, if MCIT would've picked it up.
But you want the whole bill, so what's the?
We will be thankful for whatever.
Yeah, no, but I mean, like, MCIT was gonna pick up, is it cost is like, what was it?
83.
83, and then now it's at 10.
100.
It's at 10 something. 10,4, 10,412.
What's your motion?
I'll make a motion that we pay the cost increase insurance of 10,412 to the museum.
Up to the 10.
Up to, up to $10,412.
I'll say.
Motion, a second, any further discussion on picking up interns for building?
I think, I think the verdict is to reimburse, reimburse the museum for the increased insurance cost.
Yeah, yeah, that works.
Sounds good. Any other discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie?
Thank you.
Thanks, Becky.
And then, then maybe in the future, we can look at, you, they, she operates, they operate the museum functions, and we maybe operate the building, or.
Well, I think that's your board has to look at.
Yeah.
There's a lot of, lot of information needed.
Oh, yeah, 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 we gotta.
See where the cash flow is going, each specific thing, and I would, if you can have, is there any cost savings, so.
And we have a meeting today.
Today.
Yeah.
Well, that's a, that's a big, that's a big project to look at.
Yeah, and that would take some time to go through and filter all those out. Thank you.
Thanks, Becky.
Kelsey, why don't you come up and, you can explain the airport issue better than I can, so.
Mr. Chair and Board, in your package should be a memo I put together about the airport hangar project. It's actually a project that started last year, we received some grant funding to extend the existing taxi lanes by the existing T-hangers, basically provide an area for two new six-unit T-hangers. Again, the site prep, the hangar, or the taxi lane extension was largely paid through, by those federal grants, but this year, the, the second phase of that project is the actual construction on the T-hangers. The Airport Commission went out for bids, we had bid opening on February 20th, we received four bids, the bid tab should be in your packet also. We had a low bid from North Sun Construction, there's also an alternate that basically changes the alignment of the roof. The reason for that is, the problem that we have with a lot of airport hangers is that snow and ice basically slides off the roof, it piles in front of the doors, it freezes in the winter, makes those, especially on the north side, any of those hangar doors, quite difficult to operate, so one of the things that we saw other airports doing is basically redesigning that roof line, so basically it drains to the short ends away from the doors. So, that's what the alternate is, the Airport Commission reviewed the bids, did recommend the bid from North Sun Construction, including the alternate. The second part of that is working with Haug, who's did basically all the taxi lane work for actually doing the concrete, the slab for both of the T-hangers, that portion of the project is eligible for a state grant, so we have submitted that, so you can see there's a deduct in our budget for that state grant, we, we don't have that in hand yet, but all indications are that we will receive it. So, at the end of the day, we're looking at a total project estimate just under 1.3 million dollars. The funding for that would come from basically the existing hangar rents, all the other hangers out there are paid for, except for, of course, the Lifelink Hangar, that's a little bit separate, so we would be using the revenue from the other hangers, plus the revenue from this hangar, to pay for the debt service of the 1.3 million. At this point, the request is for the county board to just approve the bid, we will have a separate financing resolution to the board probably next month, Bond Council's working on that. I think that's all I have, and is there's questions?
Yeah, basically, just, we need to approve the bids in a certain timeline, and then move forward to the, the financing end. Any other questions, Kelsey?
I don't have any.
Not a call for a motion to approve the airport hangar bids?
I'll make a motion to approve the airport hangar bid.
Motion by Dave, I'll second that.
Just a question, what is, what is anticipated rental cost of these?
Well, we put our pro formas about $200 a month, right now, our T-hangers, going off of memory here. then move forward to the, the financing and. Any other questions, Kelsey?
I don't have any.
Not a call for a motion to approve the airport hangar bids?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the airport hangar bid.
Motion by Dave, I'll second that.
Just a question. What is, what is anticipated rental cost of these?
Maybe put it on pro forma, it's about 200 dollars a month. Uh, right now, our T-hangers, going off of memory here, like 170, 180 dollars a month, and we continue to bump those up every year. And I think, again, I, the Airport Commission's gonna review those again at the end of the year. I expect we're gonna bump up all those rents as we continue going forward, but.
And generally. I could use one.
Yeah, that, because of all the funding, it, they do have to be limited to aviation use. So we've gotten better about that. We've, we've done a lot of inspections.
I got a couple of model planes.
Well, yeah.
I think in the past, we found somewhere mainly using it for storage.
Yep.
And that's all cleaned up. And I think we still have a waiting list of people looking for hangar rent. It's a shortage out there, so.
Well, at 200 dollars a month, I can see why. I mean, that's pretty, pretty inexpensive for any storage. Um, I would be curious as to other, other storage rates for other airports, just to see where we're at.
That's one of the things, um, I don't disagree. I mean, you look at any storage, it's just, um, in the market, they're, they're just, that's kind of where the market is for those. And, and I, you know, I don't know why that is, but, um.
If you have a waiting list, the mark you have, you might be low.
Maybe.
I mean.
Yeah, Airport Commission, again, I, they've been bumping up those rates every year and I.
It must have really been low.
They're only gonna keep going up. Yeah.
The way adjusted them the last couple of years. Any other discussion? Hearing them, all in the favor, say aye?
Aye.
Kerry, thanks, Kelsey.
Thanks, Kelsey.
Kerry, back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I have a few things to report out on. Um, it's already been alluded to, but negotiations with our unions are ongoing. We're in second rounds, some third rounds with them, so they are moving forward. Um, so we've been fast and furious and, and trying to get all of those scheduled, um, weekly. I think we're meeting weekly several times with, with unions, so that is moving forward.
Kind of instructed Kerry if I can't make it, but Dave can, then still go forward.
Yep, yep, we're gonna keep them going.
Vice versa, so we're not, putting on hold.
Not holding up, yeah.
It's missing, so.
Yeah, and we're scheduling before they leave the building so that we're not holding on that. So trying to move things, uh, forward. Um, the other thing is, um, you all would have gotten invites from me, and just a reminder, tomorrow, Liza from DDA will be on site. And she really laid out the schedule of, she's really here, um, to collect information about the executive search that was approved for the administrator position. And so she has that laid out, meeting with all of you individually. And then there are two, um, stakeholders groups where I just basically randomly, um, split the department heads and managers that have regular ongoing contact with the administrator into two groups tomorrow. So they will be also meeting with Liza, um, to provide input about what they would like, qualities, et cetera, that they would like to see in the next administrator, uh, position. And I, I provided the timeline to all of you too of what she was looking at. So it'll, it'll come fairly quickly. Um, as it's already been talked about a little bit, but I'll touch just briefly on this, there are, you know, bills that are sitting out in legislative session and that are watch. And I would also mimic some of the comments that it was, uh, very nice to see. And I think the sheriff also had commented to me that it was very nice that, uh, nice to see Becker County pulling together and really being out front, you know, of these bills and, and able to, uh, testify and coordinate, um, et cetera. So that was, uh, it was just really nice to see, uh, from my, from, from my vantage point. Um.
If we wanted really though, to get closer together, we could all rode in that plane.
I've already put in my bid on that eight-passender plane. I asked how many seats were in there.
We could have really been close.
I guess with that, I want to thank the fellow board members who are there. I was in travel, leaving for Mexico or else I would have attended also.
And I think we, um, when we were down there discussing this, I think, um, uh, thanks to Senator Kupac for, for, you know, asking us to be there and, and supporting what we are goals. Um, but I think he stressed how important it is to be there and testify because it, it, it shows that there is, there, the concerns are real. They're not just thrown down there. You have to, you really have to be there to show the concerns and, and to support your people that will support your point of view and vote against this bill. Um, I think they're just, I mean, there was just, yeah, obviously we all know what, what the issues are, so, um, but just wanted to say how important that is, that, that those testimonies. And I, I think in the past, I think I've testified a few ti, few times, and I think you do get, I mean, we've gotten benefits from it, um.
I do also want to recognize, um, Senator Green.
Yeah.
Because his testimony at that committee was so spot on of, and, and really that was more, you know, he really pointed out the consequences for Menomans County, but really that's, I mean, it has such great fiscal implications for all counties. So I just also want to point out how great of a job he did, um, in that committee.
I, yeah, it's, it's surprising to me that when he said that he wasn't even notified and it's, that's his.
It's his area.
Total area. And it was really disturbing that something like this big. I mean, look at, I mean, I, I wanted to mention too that, um, the State Park down in, I had, had the name on the, the State Park that they just transferred was 1,400 acres, and it took them 20 years for 1,400 acres. And they were gonna sign in a swipe of a pen, over 100,000 acres of, 100 to 150,000 acres in, without any consideration anywhere. I, I just, it was just so unsettling to me what, what the possibility was. It's alarming.
If I read that one right, that the state allocated money to replace that State Park.
Yes.
You know, so I mean, again, there was some thought in the process, you know, of passing it where this one, it really just felt like there wasn't a lot of that process, process at the state level.
We should, are, are we gonna talk about that, a, a resolution to get these other counties involved? Did Kerry remember? So when, when do we?
Go ahead.
Can we talk about it now?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so, um, I, I was getting a little information from Pat because he fought in Malakka County, you know, fought there for many years. And he suggested that we get in touch with all the counties in Minnesota because what he explained to me is that these tribes take different things and work on them. And so if this, like you said, this is just all, almost unbelievable, Barry, but if it would have gotten through there, then the other tribes would have tried the same thing.
Well, I think they're already, they're already in motion.
And so, yeah, some of it is. So what we should do is get on the same page as all, all these counties. We should get, we should do something to get in touch with all of them. And I talked to Steve Green and Matt Bliss about this, that, at that other meeting in Ogum, or Biju on Saturday, and they thought that that was a good idea to, to everybody get together. I mean, we're paying for a lobbyist right now. I mean, Menomans has offered to help us with that lobbyist. But if we had all the counties that were, that could be affected by this, and they're, almost all the counties in Minnesota can be affected by this. So if we were to get together with them, it would cut our expense and our voice would be a lot louder on this. Instead of them knocking them over one at a time, if we all get together, uh, we could maybe prevent this from happening. But they're, they're not done with this. This isn't over. That, that bill's not gonna go this year probably, but we're certainly not done with it. And we need to get ahead of it. It's like you said, nobody had any warning on this. And so to, to just wait and, and not do anything now, I think we should be doing something about it.
Is that an issue that we can discuss with AMC?
Well, I don't think, I don't know that AMC will, will touch this one because, um, it's, it's so, so split. And I don't, I don't understand how this can be a partisan issue. I, I really don't understand that at all. Um, but it seems to be, uh, the way the votes are. And, um, it's, it's, that's what's disturbing to me that, that people don't review something despite what their party is saying and say, hey, this is, this is too, you know, I might even agree with this, but this is just too, this, you can't just throw this at us and, and hope to go. I mean, even if you did agree with it. So that's what was so disturbing. But, um, you know, MRC might be able, might be, might take it. Um, but their role would be less too. I mean, I, I don't know, because they're, they have to go along. If, if AMC doesn't take a stand on it one way or the other, and I don't think they will, then MRC can pick it up and maybe, um, at least be part, partially involved in some of the, some of it, but, um.
It might be a good tool to use to get the other counties MRC.
That's what I mean, we could get, they could get.
They're more rural counties.
Well, I think, I think the lobby group that we have with MRC is very good too. So they'll.
They could coordinate so that the counties could all get together. And then they, then they could go from there.
Well, I think on this one, that, you know, we could, we could, um, even though I, a, a separate lobbyist, which we're gonna discuss while we're just, I guess it's on right now. So I think we should work with Clearwater and Menomans County just for the white earth, the white earth transfer lobbyist for us and just, and then work on a bigger lobbyist concern, you know, statewide and work through MRC with them and see if they, they will, um, grab the issue in, in the future. I mean, I think we keep both though.
You know, there's still that bill that they set aside, the, the one for first rate of refusal.
Yep.
And so it'd be nice to do something now because that one could get slipped into that ominous bill and get through. And that would really tie our hands as far as selling any land to anybody, you know? Sometimes we do sell a little land for the right reason and then that would be very hard to do if we, if that bill gets through.
Yeah, the only, I mean, the only times that we really sell land is if it's landlocked and we can't gain access to it, you know? And so, I mean, I don't, we just wouldn't sell land. I mean.
Right.
It's, it's, it's.
It'd be nice not to have that happen.
There would be part, you know, let's be, let's be fair though and say, there's parcels that we probably should be looking at, that the tribe should be, I mean, when they're landlocked with tribe all around it, I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't look at the tribe, you know?
The sheriff will tell you because they, they got that white earth land recovery going, and they have closed all that to everybody. So they're saying they don't want to close this, but the sheriff needs access to these trails.
No, I'm, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about specific. I, I mean, I've looked at the map and I don't even think it's in the, what, maybe it's not even in the forest, but there was a 40 that's got white earth trust land all the way around it. Well, you know, there's some, there's some common sense things that say they can better manage that parcel. I mean, I, I do think this is bringing us to a table that, that that's maybe what their goal is, to maybe, but I would think that we should be inviting a representative down to, in our, you know, with forest management. I mean, we should, they should be asking us then, what, what are we doing? I mean, cause we, we're planting trees, we're harvesting, we're, I mean, we have a lot of future plans and, and, um, I think we have about a five-year cut, so, five-year plan for cuts. So, um, when they, when they say that we're not, that they can manage better, I, I'd like to see what, what management that they have done because we have a five-year plan and what, what management plan do they, do they have? So, I mean, I think they need to come to the table at, at here and say, you know, this is what we see would be better. I mean, because they haven't offered any suggestion of what's, what we're not doing well. So.
One thing along with that, if Kerry could reach out to our two neighboring counties and just.
I, I have. I've had some discussions with both Clearwater and Menomans, and I have heard interest of them wanting to partner and collaborate on this issue with us as well.
Keep moving forward on that.
Yep.
I mean, I don't, I mean, I think they should pay something just so they, we say we're all three doing it.
Correct.
But I, I think we, we're the leader on this one and, and, um, um, Menomans and we're, we're financially better off than both those counties. So, I mean, it's total, what, 10,000 is what we authorize? So I don't, it's.
Fifteen.
Fifteen and then I think.
Up to 15.
Up to 15, yeah.
And if they, so I'm not, I'm just saying that we need to be the leader on this, this.
Sheriff, fine, are you on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I just want to say, I was, uh, contacted by a Menomans County Commissioner yesterday just to talk about the meeting that they had in Biju over the weekend. But, um, until this gets settled or, or some decision is made, would the board consider a moratorium on tax forfeited land, on the sale of tax forfeited land? Again, just a, a comment, looking for discussion.
Well, I think we already aren't selling any because of the Supreme Court action, you know, until we can get that straightened out, we're, we won't be selling any.
Well.
Until that is.
We, we can sell land at any, it's, the sale of tax forfeited land is at our, our discretion with the approval of the state. Um, so I don't know that we need to, I mean, we just can say we're not, this board approves any land sales before they go anyway. I don't know that we need to address it at all, actually, because there will be, you know, I think we should look at, not even on white earth, but I, I don't think we should limit ourselves to not selling land. I mean, because, um, I don't, I mean, I don't think we should sell land willy-nilly, but I think if there's a piece of ground that we can't get to and we can't manage and, and it's, they're offered to, you know, other government agencies at the time and, and the tribe has, um, they, they have the authority to purchase land anytime there's an auction, so. But I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if you'd need a moratorium, you just have, you'd have to have an agreement that we wouldn't.
Oh, that was mentioned to me too, Sheriff. And so I asked Green and Bliss about that. And they, they told, said the same thing, that probably that might anger some people and not do us a lot of good.
Good.
Where we could just agree not to sell any land.
I don't think, I don't think a moratorium is what we're looking at because it.
No.
You could say it's a moratorium, but there's no official action of that. It's just that we agree not, we're just not gonna sell it.
I have, I've, I've, I've seen what's happened to potlatch land, uh, not just in our county, but other counties, uh, it's being sold to the conservation fund. After 10 years, it, if I read their goal right, and I think we've talked about this before, after 10 years, they can sell it to whomever they want, but it's supposed to be a government agency. So.
We have, we have purchased a couple of those properties or in the process. I don't know if we're, are we finished with those two? That 80 and that 40, wasn't it?
I don't know if we are or not.
But, and we had, we had, we could have bought more, we could have bought a couple more pieces and these are the only two we, we showed interest. And we recognize that the tribe could buy them too, but, um, I, hopefully they're traded, treated the same as what we would be if, if we're paying for them. It's an appraised price that we have to pay for them.
Yeah. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
So can we do anything about, you don't want, do we, the board doesn't want to reach out to the rest of the Minnesota counties?
I think we had talked about doing it through MRC, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that, is that, is that what we?
Well, I think MRC would be our best because then, then they would help lobby for us. But I, I, I don't have a problem sending out, um, any, any, to all rural, you're probably gonna go rural counties, all rural counties and state, you know, this happened to us and, and, um, if you have any state lands, you know, you could be in jeopardy. This is, this is the action that, you know, do you wanna, do you, you know, should our lobbyists put out a flyer once a month just to, to send to you?
If I may, yeah. I was gonna get to the lobbyist as well, but I think to your point, Commissioner, I think, starting with our lobbyist that we've hired, I think, strategy, and that's part of what he'll be working on to, to start where we are now and then to expand out. And I think we could take, or he could take the lead on that as well.
Yeah, I think obviously, you know, up northern has a lot more. Um, there's another lobby group, there's another lobby, it's not MRC, there was another one up north. I can't remember the name of it. There's another lobby, lobby group.
Oh.
For counties up, I can't remember it, but we were never in, in that one.
If I understand right, not many of these lobbyists will touch anything with the tribe.
That is true.
Well, they have to make sure, I mean, you have to make sure they don't have any conflict with other counties or other agencies, you know, because they don't, they won't want to take that. So that was the big, that was the first thing.
I think the one we hired has a lot of experience in this type of thing. That's when he. He feels and so.
Have we had that conversation with this lobbyist?
Which conversation?
Bringing on more counties?
Not yet, but that certainly.
Maybe that's where we start?
Yeah, I certainly think that that's a conversation, um, that we can, that I can have or we can have, yes. So, um, but further on this topic, I know we talked about testimony and, and the work that went into this, but I think it's also important to recognize staff that were back here, specifically Mitch and Steve and as well as Kyle. They provided and, and collected a lot of information so that these issues then could be, um, that there could be testimony and, and they're just, a lot of work. And so I, I certainly think it's imperative to recognize staff as well.
Oh, and with that, probably should clarify that we get for, for mileage or for mileage per diem. Um, we did, we took a county vehicle and, but we said we were going to, but should we have that motion that the, of per diem and for commissioners testifying would be a per diem and expenses or?
I think we did.
I'd make that motion.
Meeting.
I don't know if we vote on, we kind. I don't know if we vote on it, we kind of said it afterwards, do you want to?
I, I think, yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Mileage per diem are the ones that went down to testify, or, or to testify, whether Zoom or.
That was a thirteen-hour day for.
Long day.
Motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
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 So just a couple of more items on this particular topic before I move on. So there is, the tribe has reached out to have those conversations that we were hearing that they were going to have. So there is a scheduled meeting with Commissioner Jepson, Commissioner Okason, and myself, I believe that's next week, I can't.
Did we get confirmation of it from them?
Yes, because she scheduled us, I think, for the wrong Monday, and so, yes, I did talk to her, I did.
Did you decide on a location?
It's, as she indicated to me on the phone, it's going to be via Teams. I didn't understand that it would be.
In person?
Yeah, it was remote, it was the last I heard of, and something changes.
I would encourage the tribe that if they are serious about working with the county and trying to find solutions, that you have in-person meetings. This is, this would be, this is silly in my book, if you're going to do a Teams meeting.
Yeah.
Right.
On this topic, you're not, you're not really interested in finding any solutions, if, if this is.
Well, that's my thought, also, Barry, because some of the earlier conversation with, with her up there, it was either or, and I thought, well, it's me in person. But if we're in person, I would like to have the whole board there, because we're going to be in front of their whole console. So I think it's only fair that all five of us, Kerry and.
I would agree.
I would agree with that, too.
Okay.
And we listed as an open meeting, and that's, I think, that's what we should, face to face.
Well, you need, you need to know people, you need to meet them, you need to, because if, if, that's just, it's just how you should be operating.
The last time we had that, by a Teams meeting, it was hard to even hear or see who was speaking on their side. And they probably had the same issue here, but I think they're spread out at a lot larger table, because they got fifteen people there, or more.
And sometimes they're muted and.
Yes, yeah, so.
All right, I can certainly reach out to her and, and make that suggestion.
I would like to maybe state that if you two are, are representatives for this, to authorize this as a committee.
Yep.
And you two, as a committee members, get a per diem and mileage in any, in any way.
It is a tribal relations committee.
We did, it's almost a year ago.
We met once.
Oh, yeah, there is that, could you, yeah, okay.
Tribal Relations Committee yourself.
Yeah.
But we're going to meet, just soon, in person, and the full board, we're kind of outnumbered, to speak with, they have their attorneys and.
And I think it would be important for us to have Sheriff Flander and Steve and Mitch.
Their chief of police is, is there, so.
I like that idea.
I think we should reach out to the county board once.
Okay, all right, so on this topic, the last item, and then I'll, before I move on, is I had communicated that I did write a letter in opposition to all of these bills. So that is on, on file with regards to the transfer of the lands, both House and Senate, as well as the sale of tax forfeited lands as well. So I believe I had noted that, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that. Commissioner Okason sent some information to me regarding the project four twelve, with an invite to board members or any other interest. And he asked me to bring this up for, to your attention, wanting to know if the board is interested in sending anybody to Arkansas to view what they have done, this is in relation to those troll, the troll that we are going to have coming to DL, and what, what they have done in Arkansas. And that is in, I believe it's in May, or is it end of April?
It's April twenty ninth to May first.
Then, she had estimated, Amy had estimated costs in there, I think it'd be everything thousand, twelve hundred bucks, something like.
Yeah, the flight was like six, the motel was a couple nights, and that's probably six, yeah. And they're, and they're going to cover the meals.
Yeah, I think beneficial we could, because Bentonville is apparently a leading area on how to promote the area on tourism.
Yeah, yeah.
They've gotten a lot of ideas from down there, so.
Well, I don't, I don't think, I don't think board members should be going, but maybe Cody.
Cody is unable to go.
Oh, well.
We, we talked about it through our EDA, and he's, we're talking about Bentonville. And he's having a baby the following week, so.
What?
That's what I thought, too, Cody would be a great one, or possibly even Steve.
I think it would be good to have a representative.
Yeah.
I mean, I think Amy and the crew will be really great about bringing information back.
Yeah, they will, yeah.
But I, but I also think maybe even somebody from the RAC committee would be, would be good.
I think someone at that level would be better than a commissioner, because we're, we're just not going to be that involved in it.
No. Why don't we just try to work on somebody that we could, for, favor sending somebody down and partake in it, promote our area.
Well, I think you'd have to authorize it, because that's out of state travel, you can't, there's no out of state travel without board approval.
No, well, we can authorize that and.
And find somebody.
Find somebody and.
I'll make a motion to authorize for.
Well, we're not in any hurry at this time, are we?
Well, I think, I think they need to know.
I, I think for planning, and I think for flight, et cetera.
Flight and reservation, no, no.
I mean, that was what the email said, at any rate.
Yes.
So I would like to make a motion to authorize for one employee to go down to Bentonville with, I don't know, do we want to put a cap out? Would the travel cost could be up to fifteen hundred dollars?
Well, if it's a little over that, with his employee, we still should cover it, so.
True, yep.
Employee or, like, I like the idea of a RAC member, too, if employee can't go.
A committee member from the RAC.
So, just so I understand, your first choice would be an employee, then a RAC member, or opening, I just want to understand what I'm, what you'd like me to do.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'm good, yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
We don't have a second, I'll second, yeah.
Motion to second, send employee or RAC member to Bentonville with the committee, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pause, Gary.
The next item, just for board information, is I did get confirmation from Clay County, the administrator there, Mr. Larson, that they did appoint Dwayne Erickson to the seat of the Watershed District on our, on Becker County's behalf. I was told that they did have, obviously, the two seats available, they did have three candidates, and they did appoint the recommendation, the recommended seat for, for Dwayne Erickson.
Who were the three candidates, do you?
I, I don't know, I did.
Was there another Becker County candidate?
Not that I'm aware of.
The last conversation had our Dwayne, he didn't mention all the ones, but.
Yeah, he called yesterday, and just to confirm, but I had gotten the written confirmation out of Clay County. Or I had sent the information as, at the board's direction, that that's what we wanted to happen, so. I believe it's a three-year term, is what I was told by Clay County. Just a reminder, on Friday at nine o'clock, we do have our employee appreciation breakfast.
And I'm, and I'm unable to make it, I have a Mahoobee board meeting at nine thirty.
Okay.
In Park Rapids, so usually they're in DL, so I thought I could come for at least a little bit, but this month just happened to be in Park Rapids.
Okay. And as well as there is, currently, the Becker Bay auction is going, and the last piggy had looked, funds raised are at one thousand four twenty-eight. So it's continuing, I believe, is it Thursday it closes?
Thursday, yes.
Okay.
Is the maple syrup leading the race?
Yeah.
No, my birdhouse is leading.
I was up at twenty, so that's doing pretty good.
I don't know what the high.
I brought the fresh stuff in today, so.
Sweet.
Choice, a little lighter and a little darker.
All right, so we touched a little bit on this, but the lobbyist is hired, and I did sign the contract. The board did authorize up to fifteen thousand dollars, his contract came in, it is Todd Hill. And I did, again, I did sign that contract, so they're registering him as our lobbyist on behalf of Becker County. And the total bill for this session, starting now until the end of the session, is twelve thousand dollars. It is a flat fee, I asked lots of questions when I was looking, I also had Brian McDonald take a look at the contract just to make sure that he didn't have any concerns, you know, from the legal aspect of it, and he had no concerns. So that is, is a goal. So while I had the conversation with him with regards to, at the forefront, is our issues with the state forests, the transfer of those lands. But if there are other bills that creep up here, he would also entertain, you know, on Becker County's behalf, there maybe are a few out there as well. And I had mentioned, too, as we talk about expanding that to potentially other counties and getting support from them. Part of his contract, it really outlines what he will do for us, and a lot of that is, is, you know, strategy and, and, you know, how to go about getting across our message and, and the most bang for our bucks, so that is, is, is completed. I should have mentioned for the four twelve projects, sorry, I'm backing up a little bit, that I also got a contract on that as well. That's the contract I had Mr. McDonald look at, sorry, I confused them, and that is just outlining our responsibility and the four twelve project, as well as, you know, we're the host, and they're the owner, et cetera, just outlining whose responsibility it is for the, for the troll that's going to be, the construction's going to start in May, out of the Dunlops. So we are responsible for the liability insurance on that, so I will be calling MCIT to ensure, you know, what we need to do for that as well. So I will also sign that contract, sorry, I had my contracts backwards.
I just wanted to be clear, I haven't seen the lobbyist contract.
I know, I, sorry, I apologize, I got my contracts backwards.
No reason to doubt Kerry's discretion, but I just wanted the board to be.
Yes, so, the next, next item is, I had brought this through committee, on the original proposal for, for DDA, when we started the Comp and Salary Study, in the original proposal, there was money that had been approved for looking at and writing, or assisting in writing, our countywide job descriptions. Now, we have paid the bill up to this point of what we owe to DDA for the Comp and Salary Study, and I brought it back through committee because I, I would recommend and would like to see approval from the board to move forward with the original contract, and moving forward with the right of those, the rewrite, review, whatever you want to call it, of the job descriptions. And I think that's, you know, where our, one of our next steps would be. And the total cost of that, and again, we have paid the bill up to this point, but it was originally approved at, the, the cost that they quoted was twenty-four thousand.
And that's what we had originally.
We originally approved it, and we paid up like fifty-six.
Yeah, so, yes, it was in the original.
We approved up to eighty, I think, yeah.
Yeah, it was eighty, low eighty.
Low eighty, yeah.
Yeah, I think that makes sense for us to move forward with, with them reviewing, or rewriting, or whatever it is, the job description.
Job descriptions, yeah.
You making a motion?
Yeah.
Do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion?
Do you mean?
I, I was, I mean, if we've already approved it.
I think you've already approved it, I just wanted, just to bring that to your attention, that that's where we stopped, and I would like.
There has been discussion that we weren't going to before, but.
Correct, but I think, you know, where we are in the process, I think it makes sense to move that forward now.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay.
No stopping, no.
So the last item, it's just, again, just for information, you would have received information, and I, I believe Brian McDonald had also provided some information that there may be a need to hire outside counsel for, for the zoning department, and I just, I am going to be working on that, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and that's all I have.
Thanks.
Thanks, Kerry.
Thank you.
Mary.
Good morning, Commissioners, I have a number of licenses to approve today, handed out behind the finance minutes, the list. We're going to start with gambling, Resolution three twenty-four two A, DL Lions Club for a raffle, August third at Supas Ranch.
Seven oh two A, I'll second.
Motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Second is Resolution three twenty-four two E, DL Lions Club for bingo, June fifteenth at Meadow Lake Campsite in Lakeview Township.
Second.
Can we do motion to cover all those?
The, the, if you want to do the DL Lions, all as one.
Yeah, they're all at Lakeview Campsite, so.
Yep.
I did have a question, aren't they, aren't they allowed to put those all under one application?
No, every, every function has to have a separate application.
Why didn't they just do it season long, though?
I don't think you can do charitable gambling season long, unless you get that separate license, I'm not sure why they did this.
Aye.
So we already have a motion for two E, so I'm, I'll amend it to cover two F, two G, and two H.
Got a motion, I have a second, I'll second that, all in favor, say aye.
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 Hear it.
Next, we have on sale with Sunday renewals, I have pit six eleven, Mike Williams, Lakeview Township, do you want me to do them all?
I'll make motion to approve the on sale with Sunday's renewals for the six that are listed, Leechers Parallel Detroit Country Club Pub, Detroit Mountain, and pit six eleven.
I'll second.
Motion by Barry, second by Erica, other discussion, hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Kerry.
Next, three to off sale renewal for county six, gas and bait, Lakeview Township.
Motion approved three to off sale renewal for county six, gas and bait.
I'll second.
Motion by Barry, second by Dave, further discussion, hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Kerry.
Off sale renewal for Four Corners, Josh Wangler in Erie Township.
Some of.
I'll second.
Motion by Barry, second by Dave, any discussion, not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Kerry.
And we're actually pulling the combination on off sale due into an application issue that will be presented at the next meeting if we get the correct application. The final item I have is Resolution three twenty-four two I, which is a repurchase parcel in Holmesville Township. We've received the application and the payment, and just requesting board approval to proceed with the repurchase.
I'd make that motion for repurchase.
I'll second him.
Motion to second, further discussion, because, you know, with this talk, my question is, if we couldn't sell any tax forfeited land, would this limit to something like this?
It would, it would have stopped any.
When I, when I read the statute, it, how I read it, it did not include those that want to purchase it back.
I don't.
Right, well, repurchase, the repurchase is a right, but that also expires after a year.
Oh, got you.
So then it goes, gets offered to the public, but, yeah.
Motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Kerry. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Morning, Brian.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, first item I'd like to table till next meeting, I didn't get a memo, a proposal, the way I wanted to for the board, for proper discussion, if that's acceptable.
Yeah.
And the second item is just more of a FYI, that I intend to backfill my first assistant position, Kerry helped me get that posted yesterday, so it's really all I have this morning.
Are there any updates on hiring for the open positions?
We had a brief update from DDA, lukewarm, I guess, they had three, so far recruited three individuals. Two of them have not sat for the bar exam till July, and one of them had already applied directly through the county, so hopefully the next couple of weeks maybe picks up, because, so, anyways, I will plan to be back in April with more information and a memo, thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Yeah, I also wanted to recognize Brian for our, he got the shout-out from the Red River Advocacy Center for being the highlight of the month, or I don't remember what it was called, but spotlight of the month, so I just wanted to shout out for Brian for being such a great advocate for the children of Becker County.
You know, I just finished a pretty horrific jury trial the week before last, and the, those forensic interviewers, their training is incredible, and it's very compelling for a jury, and I don't, when you have a. for a jury. And I don't, when you have a past report of abuse like that, I don't know how you would ever convince a jury, you know, to get over that reasonable doubt standard without their training and the way they, you know, discuss all these things about trauma. And it's just, they do an incredible job over there.
And having sat through a trial with you, Brian, I know you're passionate. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody else knows that and recognizes you for your work.
Thank you, Commissioner Gibson.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Judy.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have the yearly computer order for both desktops and laptops for today. It's on the Minnesota State Contract. We're purchasing from a Minnesota, we would be purchasing from a Minnesota company, the same company we purchased from last year. We're planning to replace 23 desktop computers at a cost of 20,700 and 36 laptops at a cost of 50,400. Then miscellaneous for the docking stations for the new laptops of 5200. The reason we do it that way is when we're replacing a laptop, a lot of times we don't have to replace the docking station. So it's a little bit of a, of an estimated number. And so just wanted you to know that. So the total is 76,300 and that's a couple hundred dollars less than last year. Any questions?
Do I have a motion to approve the purchase?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the computer, desktops, and laptop computers and the dock stations.
Motion by Dave. Second.
Second.
Second by Barry. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judy.
Thanks, Judy.
Thanks, Judy.
Courtney.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just have two items for you today. The first one is just an update regarding the Minnesota City Participation Program. For those of you that aren't familiar with it, it's just a down payment closing cost assistance program provided from the tax exempt bond housing pool from the Minnesota Housing Agency. It's just a commitment agreement between the county and Minnesota Housing so that they can access that and provide these loans for first time home buyers. There's really no risk or cost associated with the county. So it's just the minimum requirement, excuse me, requirement usage rate of 50% to be able to participate in the following year. This is a program that's been provided through the county for many years. And in the past, it's been brought to the board, too. So maybe some of you are familiar with it, but just wanted to give you an update on that. As you can see in the memo, Becker County, out of its allocated funds, used 301%, so well over the 50% requirement. So again, we were just able to apply for it again this year, saw a good usage out of it, and thought it was a good decision to reapply and make that available. So more information can be found on the state of Minnesota Housing D I gov website if anyone has any questions or wants to find a participating lender.
Any questions?
Do we need a motion to approve it, or is it just a?
No, it was approved, received, and we got confirmation that it was approved. So we don't need any action taken on it. But I just wanted to update you.
Okay.
If in the future, if you want it brought to the board prior, we can do that. But just didn't see any action needed. So the second one is a proposal for a workshop to be done here in collaboration with the University of Minnesota Extension. Through some of our outreach and research for developing programs and assistance here in the county, we reached out to the Extension Office. Fernando is an educator from the regional office in Morehead. And he came with some members of his team at one of our past EDA meetings presented on the various programs and research that they provide. And really, they can just give you a lot of insight in a wide variety of topics ranging from tourism, recreation, business industry, and, you know, agricultural aspects of the economy. So we thought it was a good idea, also with the recommendation, to host this workshop. And below there on the memo is just kind of an overview and summary of the proposal. This is not the official proposal, so the details will change a little bit. But really, our only obligation is to host the workshop, provide the facilities, coordinate the schedule, gather the group of people, document, take pictures, that sort of thing. So this would be really a wide variety, broad audience of members of the county to get, you know, diverse feedback so that we can look kind of objectively at the different industries in the county where we can find gaps and needs. And what this can really provide is help communities understand how government jurisdictions and organizations can affect the local economy. So, you know, might support buy in for future projects or proposals. And, you know, I think it's something that could complement some of the work being done with the comprehensive plan right now, too. So after that meeting, we also had some outreach with other local organizations, which the University of Minnesota Extension also presented their programs to. So they had strong interest in participating in the program. So this would really be a collaborative effort between the EDA and some local organizations to kind of put the planning together. And the target date would be set for hopefully sometime around the end of May. It takes a couple of months to prepare. And then after that, they will provide a summary and analysis of the meeting and the industries and feedback for us to report on. So I'm just looking for action support from the board to host the workshop and the use of the county facilities for the event, which would be probably this room unless we outgrow the capacity with the number of interested people and we would change it.
So Richard and I had briefly talked about this after the extension came to our EDA meeting. And I think there are lots of workshops that we have interest in doing. This was the one that they suggested we started with first. It is a free workshop. It doesn't cost money. It's just really us hosting it, right?
Yeah. It is, there's no indication that there would be costing any money. They receive funding through the Economic Development Agency with the University of Minnesota Kirkland, I believe it is. They provide funding for these workshops and all indications lead that it would be a supported workshop. So really, there is no cost. If there was, it would be somewhere roughly around 750 dollars. And I'm sure we would have buy in for potential cost share participation, too. So cost is not really a concern for this workshop.
So I think, I think it would be a good opportunity for us to collaborate with local EDA agencies. And I believe, was the chamber included in that?
Yeah. So kind of originally, like I said, they also participated in the presentations and that thing and have strong interest in it. The chamber, obviously, has a large network of communication. The city is, Detroit Lakes is very interested in participating. But we want to get this out to, you know, a large diverse group of different representatives from county, city officials, to, you know, industry sectors, private organizations, so we can get good feedback.
There definitely is something to learn here from this guy.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Do we need a motion just to approve hosting it?
Hosting it and, yeah, use the county facilities.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Richard. Second by Erica. Host the workshop?
I got it.
Other conversation?
I'm a, you know, I look at this and it, to be honest, it bores me to death looking at this. I have no interest. I mean, it is, you know, it's a gather data and facilitate a dialogue and identify consensus. And it's all, it's a good feel-good meeting. Can you find something that come out of this and give a, to sell this, you know, to the rest of us who don't like just sitting at meetings and talking about, can you get a success story of something that can say, hey, this came out of this meeting? You know, those things will sell these type of meetings rather than, you know, I've been in meetings like this and, you know, most people, you know, you don't, there's not much. It's just saying what you're doing and what you want to do. And, but if we can get success stories specifically to Becker County, I mean, I think that would, that would build the program or that would, that would help get some excitement in it. Reading this, you're like, you know, and I deal with the extension quite often. And it's like, you sit in a room and you talk for 15 minutes, maybe have a free breakfast, and you go home. I mean, it's, there's nothing to them a lot of times at the university. So if we can show some success, if we can identify someone, get something out of this and brings a business to Becker County that can grow part of it, or I think would sell a lot better than, I think it would sit well with me then supporting these type of things, saying, hey, they are purposeful. They, there is some knowledge that comes out of them. So if we can find some of that, you know, encourage people to say, if there's a success story here, let's hear it because we need to know that these are doing some good. So. Yeah. That's why, yeah, that's why we're starting with this one, though, Barry, because it doesn't cost anything. I'm not big on meetings either, but that guy did sell this to me. And maybe there's nothing there. But if there, we're going to look at a lot of different things we can do. You know, different activities in the county over the summer and maybe how other businesses could benefit from that. And I'm not saying there's something there, but, and if it is, then we'd be looking at more of these. But, and maybe there's nothing, but that Fernando is pretty happy. It's nice just being in a room with the guy.
Yeah.
Yes, he's very happy.
I can send you some past examples of private workshops that have been hosted. And then, you know, I think the big thing that comes out of it is just identifying, you know, those key sectors and areas to work at and create that opportunity for buy in, like I said, for future.
But then I need, then we should identify specifically what those areas are and specifically what, I mean.
That's the outcome of the workshop.
That, you know, we need, I mean, if we can hear an outcome of this helped this business and it increased their sales because of this, they found this gap or something, I mean.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Cody, part of this workshop is to gather that data to help, like, apply for grants and come up with some data, right?
Well, it's creating, you know, key analysis, like I said, for identifying, you know, the sectors, the industries that, you know, have opportunity in them. It's allocating resources, finding out how do you efficiently, you know, use a broader source of multiple organizations working together. And.
And I think it's to evaluate that opportunity of, right now, we have several different, you know, we have our Becker County EDAs, city EDAs, you know, we have a tribal EDA, and bringing them all together to start to work collaboratively so that we can be successful as a whole.
Question?
Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Carry. Thanks, Cody.
Thanks, Cody.
We'll take a quick four, five minute break and we'll come back for the ordinance hearing on class one, ATB.
Not break out?
Okay, back on schedule. Need a motion to open a public hearing?
Motion to open the hearing.
I'll second.
Motion by Barry, second by Dave. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, carried. Okay.
Purpose of this hearing is to approve an ATV ordinance number 21, which should extend from along County Road 38, north of Wolf Lake, from the city, up around the lake to the Balmy Cemetery. This, but this ordinance will allow ATVs to go from there into town. Also, it's creating the basis for if the county decides to do this in other areas as well. And so with this ordinance, the way it's written right now, but it would be just for that area.
Right.
I guess if, do you want to take public comment from?
Well, I see we've got three people here. See, you want to say anything?
I have a question. Can we, can we extend this to snowmobiles? Or is there a need for the snowmobiles to ride that shoulder in that area?
No, because their trails are in the ditch, and most of that area, we tried originally to use the ditch, but we would have to litigate so much points for wetlands, and there's wetlands on the lake side, it's all the way in the town, just about the other side. It would cost thousands of dollars, plus litigation to credits for that. We looked at that, we didn't, spending about three years' time, I was just trying to find the best problem. And that's the only equal way that I think that we can get into town, so.
No, I'm 100% fine with it. I'm just curious if, if the snowmobiles have a tough time riding in a ditch anywhere in there, we could extend it to them, then the DNR couldn't give them tickets for jumping up on the shoulder either.
Well, the western trail system is open for snowmobiles, that they are groomed at that time.
They're groomed down in the ditch.
They can't ride at all.
Yep.
I'm not aware of it. They haven't moved the trails here. Did they drop off my brand, or did they ever offer to groom the trails? I think if I get some money, could do a little snowmobile.
Right.
Anybody else speak? I know you worked with Jim also at the highway and the townships, and got kind of bussings from all, and.
Jim, do you plan on signing this a little bit, so, so that there's knowledge of, to the DNR, or any law enforcement, that this is legal in this area? And maybe warning to traffic that, that there is ATV traffic on that stretch, or?
We can, yeah. Yep, we have looked at that, and I can't remember the ordinance. I think you do the signing work on all your trails, don't you?
Yeah, the trails, as far as western district, the ordinance is further, there are stakeholders in there, county's holding, have to run the signs in the town, just want to make sure people get turned and going right, and coming back out of the town, and coming out the road. But we've, we just purchased a hundred eight foot post to do marking the trails, and making sure people stay off the main road coming out. We're going to try to use the ditch as much as possible coming out from passes, cemetery, the west side, avoiding that, and coming out the road, so. And we're also working with the township, and as far as helping to maintain that road, we can have more traffic on it, so. We'll be meeting with them at the next meeting, and we're together to determine exactly what we're going to do. We could use, we could use grant aid funds to do that, so.
Hello, Commissioner Nelson's comment, you know, we probably should have some warning signs from the highway department that says there is ATVs on road, so.
Reference ordinance. I mean, it'd help, because the state people don't necessarily know, I mean, you get a DNR officer might not, might not be familiar with the area, comes through and starts ticketing people, and we don't want that either.
So they also came on, the two that worked that area, the new guy out of, and I visited him, probably still on a job, I had, in this area, and talked about that, and then the other one, which he, from here, they overlap that area, and I think they've already been notified about what's going on. I think they put input into it also. But anything that we can do to make sure the public is well aware that it will be, the class two already can go down the freeway, they cannot.
Right.
This is a grand aid trail, so they automatically can down county township roads, right. If we can down township roads, we gotta have this ordinance to run that short stretch of 3.4 miles of whatever it is in town, in trail.
Mr. Chair, this has been to the township, and it's been to the city. They did put their concerns in some of these letters. We're going to have to go back to them and have them actually sign resolutions, based on the ordinance itself. I guess in talking about what Commissioner Nelson was talking about signage, the township did put a requirement that they want people to recognize the fact this is coming along a trail that's going by a cemetery, and that they're going to have to recognize that if there's, you know, a funeral happening, and those type of things. So, you know, the ATV club's going to have to get appropriate signage for that as well.
Any other comments? Hearing none, a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Motion by Dave, a second.
I'll second.
Second by Erica, to close the public hearing on the class one ATV ordinance 21. Back in regular session. Call for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll second. That's Becker County ordinance number 21.
Motion by Eric, a second by Barry. Approve ordinance 21. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When you get that signed, if you send it to me, I'll get my post.
A quiz for the commissioners. Anyone know any of the, the previous 20 ordinances that we have?
Any of what?
Can you tell me what the previous 20 ordinances are?
I'm going to ask the same question.
I do have a book, Keith Reckon gave me a book on them.
Do you ever find the one, it was passed many, many years, allowing soloville travel on certain roads in the county? They have to come up around on the way to open water river, or something?
I, I could look again.
Yeah, I remember writing that one up, and it was passed by the board, whether it was an ordinance for them, or.
I think that was ordinance 12.
Are they?
For his next meeting?
I know one is the lake, lake out here, for non-voting.
There was a, the state of Minnesota came out with a grant round for recycling. They appropriated a pretty large sum of money for this, and I'd like to apply for a grant for up to $850,000 to help expand the operating capacity at a recycling facility. With board's approval, what I would do is I would meet with some of these other counties, get their letters of support and some commitment, to ensure that we got enough volume coming through, and then it would come back to the board again if we got awarded this for further consideration, board approval to move forward. We also identify the funds that we're going to be, need to expend at that time. So the next step with board approval of this would take it back to our committee, we'll talk about how large of an expansion we want to do to coordinate all this, because it's, it's not just the machinery, it's going to expand this right now, which this would include a fiber screen, which is basically going to be used to pull mechanically separate out paper from co-mingled single stream, along with a glass screen, which would take all fines and glass shards out of that mix. But then with that, you'd also, we'd take a look at any other machinery that we'd need to help monitor them coming in, and perhaps look at some other grants for things like robots, or doing other things for quality control. Ultimately, what we want to do is, we want to make, if we're going to make this a regional facility, be taking commodities from Clay County, possibly Wadena, Otter Tail, as well as Becker County. What it does for us long-term is, if something happens to the sorting crews that we have right now, we would have the facility where we have the capacity to handle stuff with a lot more mechanical separation rather than labor. So it helps ensure that we have the capacity to continue to operate if something does happen to the sorting crew that we got right now, and then, you know, who knows what's going to happen in the future.
Basically, Steve, right now, for, say, the Iqwa crew just disappeared, would have been.
We went through this once, and if it happened once, it's probably going to happen again, so it is very difficult if that does happen. You're absolutely right. What it does do is it helps ensure operational, the continuity of it.
It's like Prairie Lakes, Minnesota, solid waste, their sorting line must be at least a half a dozen people, there are more, and they're paid employees.
They are.
They're doing that, so. That's got to be fairly costly for them.
It is.
So. And I think, like Steve mentioned, we've talked to some of the other so-called stakeholder counties, that they're all kind of looking at this, they'll.
In the last number of years, what has happened is that the counties have organized into waste sheds, so that Prairie Lakes is what was considered a waste shed, where the counties in this region all work together on how solid waste is handled, and, you know, we've invested in the perm resource recovery facility. As part of the joint powers agreement, we agreed to take ownership on that, along with liability, and we agreed to work on other solid waste issues, which would include our facility here. We're talking about ways to handle ash coming out of the perm incinerator, and just looking for new, more innovative ways to take care of our problems, because the cost of landfilling continues to go up.
Okay.
Basically, our board, board, motion approval to move forward.
Looking for a motion to approve applying for a recycling grant?
I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve the grant.
Motion by Richard, is there a second?
Second.
Erica?
My question is, if we get the grant, you're applying for a grant of up to 800, up to 850,000?
Correct.
And the total project then is, what, one?
It's 1.1 to 1.2 million.
So your, your request then, if approved at the full amount of 850, we would still be on the hook for 350 to 400,000?
We would be, so, but that, we would be, that could be cash, or it can be in kind, but it's going to be primarily cash. So we would have an added obligation on top of that, for sure. So that's why I wanted to reach out to these other counties to ensure that, that they're going to be there when we want to do this, because if there's not a volume commitment that's going to make this work, then you would, you know, we'd have to revisit this and say, do we really want to go forward? Or if the state comes back and says, we'll fund 500,000, for example, instead of 850, you know, do we want to spend more money of our own? I mean, there's, there's a bunch of different scenarios that would play out at that point, as well.
I think when the grant comes back, I'd like to see if there's cost savings, and then revenue, like, cost savings and less employees, and revenue of more valuable product, or more product, so.
Absolutely.
I just know what Prairie Lakes receives as revenue from their recycling, it's fairly large in a year, and because they could deal with so much volume, and a lot of it has come from counties that have already separated stuff out of there, and they're still getting more.
That's correct. You know, with this, we're at a point in our facility now that we're maxing out what you can do by hand. And if we want to increase that throughput capacity right now, and take on more commodity out of Clay County, because we take all our commodity coming out of Clay County, with the exception of Moorhead, or most of it, I should say, we would probably need to double that capacity to move more product through. And then we'd also take a look at, what temp of a revenue sharing contract we would set up with these other counties. But those are, those are things that I would probably bring back and run through our environmental committee, which would eventually find its way to the board.
Okay, a motion and a second. All the questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Steve.
Jim.
Morning, commissioners. Highway has four items for your consideration. The first two are final payments. First final payment is to CNL Excavating on the Westlake Drive project from the Legion down to County Road 6. This project was completed successfully. It is administered by the city, so they will be making the final payment, but we're running this through, so you see the final costs on this. Came in very close to our contract amount, and some of the extra work just included a few change orders for a few different items, but very happy with the way the project turned out.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2B.
I'll second. Very good.
Second final payment.
Why, second, Jim? Excuse me. Got a motion and a second?
Richard, Richard got me, got me by the way.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carried. Second final payment is on the Phase 2 Westlake Drive. This is with HOG
contracting. This project was completed successfully as well. We did have our change order that went over was due to some subgrade corrections, and the city had some additional costs due to some sanitary sewer work. But all in all, the project came in very close to the estimated amount, and we're recommending approval.
There a motion on 2C?
I'll make a motion to approve 2C.
I'll second.
Motion by, second by Dave. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carried.
How much of that was, is city, I mean, how much of the increase is city versus county?
I don't have the number, but we did have a fair amount of, you know, bad material that we ran into, so I think ours was in the realm of, you know, 100,000, but all covered by, you know, our state aid funds that were used to fund this project.
It's, just, it's noteworthy to know that we're approving the final contract, but we don't know what the county versus city's portion of that is on this list. It might be something I'd like to see in, when we do a joint project, and I see what the county versus.
I know, I had a conversation with Jim about that too, and Highway, that a lot of it on Phase 2 with HOG was that subgrade correction, and some bad soils that they had to remove, and, so. A motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
We already voted on.
Did I?
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
We doubled it.
We got it covered, then. Okay. Item three, Jim.
Next item is a bid award. We opened bids last week on our work on CASA 42, 44, and 47. We had a good turnout on bidders. We had six bidders, or five bidders, six, and the low bid was from Mark Sand and Gravel, in the amount of $4,071,867.2, which is 20% under our engineers' estimates, so we're very pleased with that. Very competitive bids there, and Mark's has worked for us in the past, so we're recommending award to Mark Sand and Gravel.
Have a motion to approve bid award 2D.
Motion to approve 2D.
Second.
Second by Barry. Discussion? How does that mixed price compare to last year? It's a little less, isn't it?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, yep. And or $8, $9 a ton last, something like that?
On some of it, yeah.
Yeah, great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carried.
Next item for your consideration, I gave you some information, and a proposal from Metco, who's doing our soil contamination investigative work at our old Public Works facility. They went through the process based on what the PCA required when we discovered some contaminated soil beneath our fuel island. With their further tests on that, they discovered that some of the contaminated material did reach the groundwater, and as a result, due to the sandy soils in that area, PCA rules now require us to install monitoring wells to see if this will move at all. Our consultant here feels that, he doesn't feel that the material will be moving, so the process is to install these monitoring wells, they'll come out after, a few weeks after they're installed, to do their first test on them, and then three months later, they'll take a test, and then they'll analyze to see if there's been any movement or not. If there is no movement at that time, then the PCA will close this, this findings, and then we can reseal those wells and be done with it. If there is movement, then we just continue to monitor, and they may require us to install wells further downstream. So this is still funded by the. So, this is still funded by the PCA Petro Fund, up to 90% reimbursement, like the previous work that they're doing. I guess I did mention to our committee that we will save some funds, because they didn't write a report for their first phase of work, they just will include that in this report now, so we did save a little bit of money. But for $37,000, we'll be on the hook for 10% of that, so. If there's any questions, or, I know in committee, we asked about if we could dig it up, since it did reach the groundwater, that would require pumping the groundwater and treating that, which is significantly more expensive than just monitoring this. We, like you said, they don't feel it'll move. I mean, it is under a sealed parking lot and that, so I think we're probably safe about that. After we go through this process, we should be done with it, but this will probably take another six to nine months to complete this work.
I mentioned, committee, it's probably been there for 60, 50 to 60 years, hasn't moved much, so. With that, a motion to approve the Metco for the monitoring wells for accordance with MPCA?
I'll make a motion to approve the monitoring wells.
Motion by Richard, no second on that. Further discussion?
I think in the motion, it should read that the cost is $37,277, which is 90% reimbursable, you know, from the, our cost is only 3,500.
That's fine.
37.
37.
3700.
37,277.
77, yeah.
Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carried. Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Could I mention, I heard you talk earlier about our lobbyists and that, and I was thinking, I know we had had initial conversations with our senator about looking at that tax refund on the building. I did do some, well, I looked through the files, Senate files that have been introduced on that. There is one out there similar to the bill that didn't pass last year, but it doesn't cover the time period that we're in, that where we constructed our facilities. I also saw that there was another bill out there that some school districts had joined together to request the same thing, and each of those has their own time period, but maybe we could continue to work with our senator and see if we can get something amended or introduced on this as well. I, in my conversations with City Detroit Lakes and Kelsey Clem, they went through a process wherein their bidding, where they're able to be exempt, where they, essentially, I think they classify their consultants as percy, or their contractors as purchasing agents for the city, which allows them to then be tax exempt. We did not do that. I guess it's a cumbersome process, and I guess I wasn't aware of how to do that at the time we did ours. So I guess, in the long thing, long here, I guess I'm asking, I'll keep reaching out, and I don't know if Carrie's had any further contact on that as well.
When I was referencing the lobbyist and going forward with some of the bills that are pending on some of the other issues, this is one of the issues that I have very briefly spoken to the lobbyist about. So when I said that they may pick up some of the other, or bills that are already pending, or any other issues that we may have, this is, this is one of the topics that's on the radar.
And I believe, Carrie, you had a conversation with Senator Kubeck and Moorhead a few weeks ago.
Correct.
Meeting up there, so.
Correct.
So, all right, well, can keep, keep working on it then.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
With that, we have to go into closed session.
Before we do, I'd just like to make a comment. When we stepped outside, I, coming from a resort, a two, probably a two-star resort down in Mexico, I'm really come to appreciate the cleanliness of our courthouse here and how, you know, how wonderful our floors look outside now, or they just recently waxed or, because it looks amazing out there. I just want to give a shout out to our custodial and maintenance staff. I mean, we don't recognize it when it's, when it's, everything's done well, and I don't know if I've ever noticed that this courthouse isn't well-kept, so thanks to them.
Yeah, if I may, there was a full-time staff that was hired, that was brought back that had been a previous employee, and his main focus is making sure that the floors look, and you can tell exactly when he came into the building. Yes, they do, they look absolutely fantastic.
Awesome.
Okay, closed session for labor negotiations, need a motion to close the meeting pursuant to Minnesota State Statute, Section 130D.03, Subdivision 1B. The governing body of a public employer may, by majority vote, in a public meeting decide to hold the closed meetings to consider strategy for the labor negotiations, including negotiations, strategies, or development discussion, and review labor negotiations proposals. It's kind of long-winded, conduct pursuant to 179.01.
Glad you have to read that, let me, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Erica, all in favor?
Aye.
Carrie.